Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Almar Begay did not answer roll call. Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr.
Delegate Allen is present.
Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay is present.
Honorable Paul Begay answered roll call. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown is present.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown answered roll call. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton is present, thank you.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton answered roll call. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi answered roll call via text. Honorable Speaker Seth Damon is present. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. did not answer roll call. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Present.
Honorable Mark Freeland answered roll call. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Hello, Mr. President, good morning.
Honorable Pernell Halona answered roll call. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Good morning, Delegate Hino is present.
Honorable Jamie Hino answered roll call. Honorable Vince James.
Good morning, Delegate James, present.
Honorable Vince James answered roll call. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez is present.
Honorable Rick Nez answered roll call. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater did not answer roll call. Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. is present. Honorable Otto So.
Could you sit down, who was it, I'm here.
Honorable Otto So is present. Honorable Charlene So.
I'm present.
Honorable Charlene So answered roll call. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So did not answer roll call. Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Eugene So answered roll call. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. did not answer roll call. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edison Winika did not answer roll call. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Edmund Yasi did not answer roll call. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair is here, yes, yes.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair answered roll call, going back up.
Daniel So is present.
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Almar Begay did not answer roll call. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. did not answer roll call. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater did not answer roll call. Honorable Daniel So is answered roll call. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. did not answer roll call. Honorable Edison Winika.
Here.
Honorable Edison Winika answered roll call. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Edmund Yasi did not answer roll call. Speaker, you have nineteen members present, including yourself.
Daniel, I'm here, present.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. answered roll call. Twenty members present.
Thank you very much, colleagues, with that, twenty members were present there this morning, for the record, Honorable Slater is excused today. What that colleague has indicated yesterday, there was a invocation that was conducted Wednesday morning that was a Naval Nation Council session, and we did move forward with that yesterday and moving on into today, so we did have an invocation. With that, moving on down, colleagues, we are on, we did complete the report on our agenda, we did repeat old business, complete old business, zero zero eight six S two two, and now we are on new business, item number six, A legislation zero zero six three dash two two. Let me give you a rundown, I do have Honorable Madam Chair Amber Cotty with three minutes and forty-nine seconds on reserve time, I do have Chairman Rick Nez one minute and nine seconds on reserve time, Honorable Herman Daniels three minutes and twenty-five seconds on reserve time, and I have Honorable Freeland with no time, Honorable Otto So. Oh, don't you wait, it is, Honorable Otto So, no time, Honorable Charlene So, no time, Honorable Kim Begay, no time, Chairman Yasi, no time. With that, moving on down, I do have Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair in the queue, Honorable Yellowhair, floor is yours at this time. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, good morning, going twice. Jimmy Yellowhair going three times, that, any other comments or questions, colleagues, before I go back to reserve time on legislation zero zero six three dash two two? We go back to Madam Chair Amber Cotty, good morning, Madam Chair, three minutes and forty-nine seconds.
Yeah, Dave Speaker, thank you, committee members, council, regarding on the main motion, Speaker, I was requesting an amendment, and CPMD was going to provide the correct documents, I'm still waiting for those documents, Speaker, if I could get some assistance in terms of how CPMD is providing that information to delegates, and what is required for the amendments, and I'll reserve my time for that update, thank you.
Twenty minutes and twenty-four seconds. Well, I think Ms. Barboff went over yesterday what's all needed for her office in order to do an amendment, I don't know if Ms. Barboff has started your amendment, Ms. Barboff, have you started Madam Chair Amber Cotty's amendment?
Thank you, thank you, Speaker, this is Ms. Barboff.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm not actually, I must defer that question to Lauraleen or Lawa, Lawyer, I'm not aware of Delegate Cotty's amendment request, so I think Lauraleen is on the line, perhaps she can share any info she has, thank you.
Lauraleen.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, I have not received this morning, I have not received any amendment request from Delegate Cotty, I do, I believe there was one yesterday, and I did, she sent a request for several amendments, but I'm not sure which one she's referring to. If she can be more specific, I can look for an email, or she can resend the email, I can work on that immediately, but I'm not aware of what she's referring to at this point. Back to you, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Chair Cotty.
Yes, thank you, Speaker, I did request an amendment to the Office of Legislative Council yesterday, the documents that were provided from CPMD, they needed an updated project summary and form, the documents that CPMD were able to send in the past were for a different project, a different delegates project, and so my question was for CPMD, I requested that they're on the, they were on the line yesterday, and to provide those documents to delegates, so we can move forward with amendments for our shortfall projects. It's, it's critical that we get this information from CPMD, Speaker, if that's required from the amendment, if we're not getting those documents, what legislation then do we need to waive if the program is not providing that documents, and delegates want to move forward with providing funding for their shortfall projects, thank you, Speaker.
Well, Madam Chair, I don't know if anybody's on from CPMD, what's, Mr. James Atticai, and Mr. Andy Thomas, we're on yesterday, I don't know if they're on this morning, but I know in speaking with, with what the department manager indicated, or department director, James Atticai, stated that he's not going to have that information ready till possibly as early as next Friday.
Mr. Speaker, may I add something?
Yes, Ms. Tabai, Office of Legislative Council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, this is Lauraleen, okay, so I did receive a request from Delegate Cotty for funding for the Tisto, Chapter Project, Red Mesa, Newcombe, and Shiprock. I only received the necessary documents to do the amendment for the Tisto project. For Red Mesa, Newcombe, and Shiprock, I indicated to Delegate Cotty that we need two items at minimum, a project description and a cost estimate for each of those other three, and as of, as of now, I've checked my email, and I have not received anything from CPMD for those, however, the Tisto Chapter Project, the amendment for that should be ready to go, thank you.
Hey, so those are not available at this time, Madam Chair, we did text the Division Director and CPMD Manager to see if they could respond at this time, to see how long it's going to take to get those documents in, as indicated, I know Mr. Atticai indicated till next Friday, as early as, but I don't know, maybe something else. There's blowing in the wind, is there anybody on from Division Community Development or Mr. James Atticai?
Speaker, this is Delegate Cotty.
Yes.
Speaker, as a delegate, can I just provide that project summary and that document? Again, as I, and I stated, and I think Legislative Council, I did email that that project, the Tisto project, is not in my region, and CPMD sent information for projects that I did not request, so we're trying to correct that, but CPMD is not providing the correct information. Is this a document that just can be created, or does it, I can, I can write out a summary right now, and we know the amount.
Hey, thank you.
Is that what it's needed, or it comes from CPMD?
Let me, let me go back to Division, or to Office Legislative Council, you're reserving your time, Madam Chair?
Yes, if you're taking my time, I reserve my time.
With that, reserve two minutes.
Actually, Speaker, I don't think you should be reserving my time, I was asking questions to Legislative Council, and when I was responding, you said you weren't going to take my time, but if you need my seconds, go ahead and take it.
Every time, it two minutes and three seconds, I'm going back to Office Legislative Council, Office Legislative Council to respond, to see.
I'm going to answer, so Lauraleen doesn't have to, what we need for each project, if you're going to want to amend it, as you stated yesterday, we need the project summary, and we also need the cost estimate, projected budget, so once we get those, that will be great, as far as the delegate actually creating the budget, as long, as long as you, it's verified, meaning that amount is, I don't know, perhaps signed off on by CPMD, or signed off, I guess, by your chapters or something, but we need, for accountability purposes, for planning purposes, et cetera, we need to have the cost estimates, I think a good example of what we, when we say a, a cost estimate, that was, there were examples of that in the two or three amendments from yesterday, thank you, Speaker.
Good morning, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yelman, is that you?
Good morning, Speaker, and members of the Twenty-Fourth Naval Nation Council, good morning, this is Pearl, I'll go ahead and work with CPMD, and we'll work with Ms. Barboff to get the documents to her office as soon as possible.
Hey, thank you, what, um, Mr. Dr. Yelman, I'm going to ask you this question, your division, or your, Mr. James Atticai indicated that Andy Thomas had his documents ready to go, and he was the only one yesterday that was ready to go, and it's going to take some time for these projects to get updated, now, when you're talking about as soon as possible, does that, as soon as possible mean within a couple of hours, or as soon as possible indicated yesterday by Mr. James Atticai meant next Friday? That was as soon as possible? That's a timeframe I need to know, because delegate seems to know to say, okay, well, if they're not going to have that available today, then, then that gives the direction on what needs to be done on their end, in order for them to make the decision on what options could be available, Dr. Yelman?
Okay, thank you, Speaker, thank you for the clarification, I'll inquire with Mr. Thomas and Mr. Atticai on exactly which documents they have, or information they've provided, I did catch the end of Delegate Cotty's comments about Tisto, so I, it, it sounds though she's asking for a different region or different project, so I'll clarify and provide additional information here in a few minutes, if that's possible, Speaker.
Thank you. That colleague's getting that information together, let me go ahead and continue on down.
We're in a privileged Delegate Cotty.
There was a what a privilege, Madam Chair Cotty.
Yes, thank you, Speaker, the project summaries and project funding requests coming from me, Delegate Amber Canaz Bacardi, is for the Gadiachi, Hokon senior center project, the Red Mesa senior center project, the Newcombe senior center project, and all of these are shortfalls, and the Shiprock shortfall, that is the request, what was sent to me was Tisto's, that is not my district, that is not what I requested for. I'm not trying to get funding for another delegate in another district, what I'm trying to do is get funding for the projects that are in Northern Agency, and that the senior centers have requested, I, I'm, again, to clarify for everyone on the call, I did not request Tisto's project, but that was what was sent, and we can make an amendment with Tisto's project.
Thank you, there was a point of privilege, just to clarify, that's the information that's being requested, Dr. Yelman, and that's the information for those specific areas, and how long it's going to take to gather that, so I'll come back to you. With that, colleagues, let me go on, go on down, I'm on reserve time, Chairman Rick Nez, one minute and nine seconds, good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, I'm Damon, honorable members of the Twenty-Fourth Council, I, I do support the legislation by Shemela, Honorable James, and I do support the senior citizens, and I'm a senator, if we could get some of these amendments, like a standalone legislation, I, I would like an amendment, but I'm going to go ahead and have a separate legislation for what I'm going to be requesting, and I can do that, things that I'm still working on with, for one of my chapters, two of them, actually, so, it is about this, oh, thank you, I'll, I'll reserve my time, thanks.
Reserve your time, sixteen seconds. Moving on down, thank you, Honorable Herman Daniels, three minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Reserve time.
Three minutes and twenty-three seconds. Moving on down. Going back to the, going back to the queue, I have anybody else in the queue, but I did have Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, calling on you a second time, Honorable Yellowhair. Honorable Yellowhair going twice. Morning, Honorable Yellowhair going three times, second time I called on you, Yellowhair. Moving on down, colleagues, if there's no other anybody else in the queue, I'm going back to reserve time. Madam Chair Amber Cotty, two minutes and three seconds, but before I go back to you, Madam Chair, let me see if DCD has an answer.
Speaker, I'm working with Mr. Atticai and Andy right now, if we can just have a few more minutes, then we'll be able to provide a better estimated time, thank you.
This is Andy. Did you guys hear me?
That, Madam Chair Amber Cotty, and come back to you, two minutes and three seconds on reserve time.
Yes, thank you, Speaker, it, it certainly is a challenge to get this information, understanding CPMD is chronically short-staffed, but there has to be a system in place, so that we can provide support to our senior centers, last week, we had three Northern Agency senior centers close because they failed their inspection, there has to be more of a priority presented if this information was back from twenty seventeen, and so, and just a few months ago, when another delegate had a legislation, we did request and update it for CPMD, we, as delegates, we were told, do a standalone legislation, we can't do the standalone legislation if we don't get the information from CPMD, so three months, you know, in the future, we're back at the same place, and you could review the last request for Sehassen, and see that we had a similar conversation when it came to shortfall, and I'll reserve my time, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Fifty-seven seconds. Moving on down, Chairman Nez, sixteen seconds on reserve time.
I'm going to go ahead and wait my time, ready to vote, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Moving on down, Honorable Herman Daniels, three minutes and twenty-three seconds. Honorable Herman Daniels going twice. Honorable Herman Daniels going three times. Colleagues, any other comments or questions at this time? Let me go back to
Speaker, Delegate Daniel So, do I have time on this main motion?
You do, Chairman.
Thank you, request to speak then.
Yes, Chairman, good morning, the four jurors.
Yeah, uh, colleagues of the Twenty-Fourth Naval Nation Council, I, I really feel like, Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi has an issue that she needs addressed, and yesterday's tablean motion just didn't serve needs, and I really feel like we could Either table this until. Monday or Tuesday and give CPMD. Uh. Time to get us the um. Appropriate documents. It seems like uh. Uh. Executive Director of CDC just now heard the issue. And I feel like. Perhaps Monday or Tuesday would be the appropriate time to come back to address this particular legislation. And it would give other delegates a time to. Check with their. Uh, senior centers within their district. That would be my thoughts. Uh, with that, uh, Speaker, give me guidance. Either a recess. Or. A tabling motion to uh. Table July twelfth or. July eleven. Thank you. Reserve my time.
Colleagues, um, I mean, my. I'm going back again to what the presenter had indicated, since you're asking for guidance right now. Uh, and I I don't want to, as a sponsor, to be um, deterred or. Uh, from the the comments I'm gonna make. Um, I will make shames. As I know you did put a lot of work and effort into this, and Honorable Chairman Daniel So is asking me. Uh, for advice on the direction. Uh, it seems like there's multiple different resources. Uh, that are being outlaid here, uh, that need to be um, resolved. There's a, there's a bigger platform. Uh, and a bigger need, not only outside of the scope of work from senior centers to all the chapter houses. To all the different uh, head start buildings, all the capital project buildings. Uh, that are across the nation and. As Mr. Andy Thomas indicated yesterday. Madam Chair Amber Cotty, I do believe one of the bigger questions where she was looking, she's been looking for that is. An updated shortfall listing. And to have that complete shortfall listing attached to this legislation. Uh, is what I was, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair Cotty, but. That was something that you were looking for to have yesterday. And and asking to see how long that would take to get completed. Um, miss, according to CPMD. Uh, yesterday, Mr. James Atticai said he can get that to you by next Friday. Uh, if that's the case, and if that's gonna be. The 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 long transition in order for, or the the needed transitional time. In order for the documents to get prepared, so that not only. Pinpointing some shortfall listings, but getting. The advance advice to get complete shortfall listings for the entire Navajo Nation added on. As a complete amendment, then that's something that could be done. But that's something that we would have to wait until DCD provides in order to give us that complete overall. Variable information that's validated, and that's the reason why. I think Dr. Yellman is conveying with Mr. Thomas and Mr. Atticai right now. And trying to see how long it's gonna take to actually get a complete listing out. Um, per their recommendation, if it's gonna be coming back as early as next Friday, it might even be longer. Now, there was a tabling motion yesterday that was gonna be having to have us uh, in in place of a, of our Navi on the fourteenth. Which I was uh, advising. That that probably wouldn't be a good idea due to the fact that there's multiple legislations that are gonna be a bit, that are gonna be available. If we're going to table this legislation, uh, Chairman Daniel So. From the, to the eleventh or the twelfth. The higher recommendation is uh, to get complete adequate time. If there's, if there's an additional four more days until this legislation, instead of having a special session. That week before Navajo Nation Council Summer Session would just to be to table this legislation until summer session. And 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 that is only three weeks or two and a half weeks away. That'd give Mr. Andy Thomas his time to give that information back. Madam Chair Amber Cotty will have her information by then, but. Again, that's only a suggestion due to the fact that. It does cost time and uh, it gets into, if we do have a special session. The week before, which is, which is highly, highly. Gonna push into everybody's ability, not only an office legislative council trying to. Put, push aside all their work that they're trying to do, all the committees' works that that has to do in order to get. All of these other legislations that are going through the hopper, through the process right now. To stop and have an emergency, a special session the week before Navajo Nation Council Summer Session. So pushes stress on the staff, pushes stress on the Office Legislative Services. In order for those, these, that kind of action to happen. I'm just speaking from the portion of the standpoint of what. Uh, Office Legislative Council has to do and Office Legislative Services has to do. The week prior before the, before Navajo Nation Council Session. Uh, Honorable Chairman Daniel So, so that's my recommendation.
Thank you, and and I guess. I tried to do another special session. Our Navajo Nation public would be. Very concerned that we would be convening just for one legislation. So I will offer a motion to table. And that it would be um, addressed at the uh, summer session. Of the uh, Navajo Nation Council. That would be my motion, uh, Speaker. The other uh, motion, it it just. Was. What we voted down just didn't. Serve what I feel like. Um. That the needs of the eighty-one senior centers. Yes, there are. Uh, needs out there. We acknowledge that. And we hope that CPMD does. Come up with an uh, an up-to-date list. Um, after the tabling motion, I would like to also motion for a directive that is uh. Ready per Ms. Bob Ross. Um. With that, Speaker, motion to table until the summer session.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, there's motion to table legislation zero zero six three dash two two to give more ample time. For colleagues to have uh, available amendments. To be presented and also CPMD to have an overall shortfall listing. Plan regularly available. Uh, and the timeline is till summer session. Um, and this is uh. Motion by Chairman Daniel So. Is there a second?
Okay, okay, sure.
Honorable Eugene, so, second. That colleagues, there's no debate on a tabling motion, but I do go ahead and go back to Honorable Vince James. Honorable James, you do have three minutes on the board. To explain, uh, support or not support. Jar, just say to, say your position on this tabling motion at this time, because you are the sponsor of the legislation.
Uh, can I add on, Speaker, Shana, the members of the uh, council. Uh, yeah, it had been a good morning. Um, my, my question. Um, is where, where were all my colleagues? Where were you guys? When this legislation was going through the committees? All that time was in place to get your projects ready. How many times did I add it on to the agenda? And not one time was it taking an effort to, to. Ask CPMD to retrieve these informations regarding your projects. It's very bothering some, um, because our project. For Gennado Senior and Veterans is construction-ready. And my question to CPMD is out of this listing, how many is construction-ready? Meaning that. How many would be starting their construction? To where we see some kind of um. Facility building. Next year. Because a lot of these projects are going to have to go through the um, bidding process again. And if we're gonna sit here and talk about bidding process and then at the same time thinking about the, all the projects under legislation zero zero eight six. I mean, put, put those together and and think about it. Uh, I I know the need is out there for many different projects, but my question is, out of this listing. How many is construction-ready that can start this fall? To where we start seeing some kind of work and building going up by next year, spring. So, so with that, um, colleagues respectfully, I just ask that. Uh, you just wrote red, and let's move forward with this uh, legislation, because we're, we're hurting and. As we continue to prolong it, the inflation, the materials and the supplies continue to increase on us. So.
Thank you very much. With that colleagues, going to the board on a tabling motion. Uh, zero si- zero six three dash two two until summer session to provide ample time. For Division Community Development and CPMD to provide an overall listing. For projects with shortfalls and for Office Legislative Council. Help assist in drafting possible amendments.
Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Almer Begay did not vote. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior.
Uh, Kay, which red?
Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior votes red. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green. Yeah.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canesba Cotty.
Uh, shout out Delegate Amber Canesba Cotty, may vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canesba Cotty votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior did not vote. Honorable Mark Freeland.
I vote red.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes red. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona did not vote. Honorable Jamie Hanyo. Honorable Jamie Hanyo.
Hanyo votes red.
Honorable Jamie Hanyo votes red. Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jane votes red.
Honorable Vince James votes red. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Junior votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, Dr. George, sure.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior.
I vote green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Junior votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honor. Honorable Edmund Yasi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red. Going back up, Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Almer Begay did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green. Speaker with a vote of fourteen in favor, six opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you, that colleagues. On legislation zero zero six three dash two two, there's fourteen favors exposed and uh, Speaker not voting. Uh, with that, that legislation zero zero six three dash two two will be back on the uh, the summer session. This legislation will be under all business colleagues on the Navajo Nation Council Summer Session. That, we are moving on down. Okay, we are moving on down. Item number six, new business. Item number B, legislation zero zero one six dash two, sponsored by Honorable Freeland. That, Mr. Rico, if you could read that into the record, zero zero one six dash two two.
Thank you, Speaker, and members of Twenty Fourth Nomination Council, tracking number zero zero one six dash two two in action relating to the Resource Development. And Navakia Committee and Navajo Nation Council extending the time for. A limited waiver of sovereign immunity to allow the Navajo Nation to be sued in federal district court regarding compliance with the Na- National Environmental Protection Act. In carrying out the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Grants and authorizing. The President of the Navajo Nation to be the certifying tribal official to execute Form seventy fifteen point one five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Mark A. Freeland. You do have a committee report from the Resource and Development Committee that recommend do pass with no amendment. There's a committee report from the Navakia Committee that recommend do pass and refer to the Navajo Nation Council. Per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Rule Nine, legislation has been written to record by Let's China Wish Recording. This legislation is a two-thirds legislation, Mr. Speaker.
You very much colleagues with that. Uh, colleagues on legislation zero zero one six dash two two, this is a two-thirds legislation. This legislation.
Speaker, are you still there?
Yes, sorry. Somebody muted me. Um, with that colleagues, it's a two-thirds legislation on zero zero one six dash two two, colleagues. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Yellow Hair.
Motion by Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Second. Twice. I mean, he knew. I call these any comments, questions on zeros, legislation zero zero one six dash two two.
I've got a question, Speaker.
Thank you. With that, Honorable Freeland, we've got twenty minutes on the board. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Speaker. Um auto, good morning, colleagues and staff. Um we present this legislation this morning to you. Um requesting um a limited sovereign waiver of immunity regards to the NIPA process, the National Environmental Protection Act, and carrying out, of course, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Grants and authorizing uh the Navo Nation President to uh certify as a tr- be the certifying tribal official to execute Form seventy fifteen bash dash fifteen through September thirtieth of twenty twenty five. I do have two agents with me uh with Navo Housing Authority, uh Mr. Dwayne Waseta as well as Ms. Thomasita Morris. Uh Mr. Waseta, I'm going to turn it over to you to give further explanation on this uh request. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, um Speaker and um Council. Uh my name is Dwayne Waseta. I am working with Navo Housing Authority as the Chief Operating Officer. Uh the legislation before you is a leg- is a standard legislation that has been um has went through the process over the past twenty years. The first registration that was um approved by council was in two thousand. So every four years, we renew this legislation to allow Navo Housing Authority to complete the environmental review record um on behalf of the HUD. The HUD requirements to carry out this uh grant requires us to do the full environmental review um of projects and programs that are undertaken with Nahaza. And this also, like mentioned earlier, allows the Navo Nation President to sign the certification document form the seventy fifteen point fifteen. Um this right here, this new let's, it's a renewed legislation. Um so in the past um twenty years, um these, this legislation has been um has been renewed um four times um in um and this is just a standard documentation. I'll turn it back over to you, Speaker.
Okay, um thank you, Mr. Waseta. As far mentioned, uh Speaker and colleagues, this is just a uh process that is continuously um renewed. And this process is up right now and we're, I believe, NHA is is requesting this uh to be uh done uh expeditedly so we can get things moving on their end. But I humbly ask for your your support and requests of this legislation. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Mr. Waseta, can you put yourself on mute? Thank you. That, colleagues, we have a motion in a second and as indicated, uh uh this legislation is um um recurring, I guess, uh reauthorization. Colleagues, uh just now talked to Legislative Council or Legislative Services. Uh the last renewal was uh back in twenty seventeen. That was legislation CO dash fifty eight dash seventeen. That, I'm going to the floor. Man Chair Charles Newton, good morning. Floor is yours.
Good morning, Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. It's a brand new day. I feel blessed. Uh Speaker, really quickly, or actually NHA, Mr. Waseta, and also uh Delegate Freeland, can you tell me um the purpose of this legislation is 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 stated on the front page? I mean, the front part of this document, which is compliance with NIPA. How does NHA comply with NIPA and why do we always have to do this um extension of the limited waiver of sovereign immunity? I reserve my time, Speaker.
Thank you, Man Chair. Four minutes and thirty-four seconds was our time. Any other colleagues, comments or questions at this time?
Speaker Damon, this is Delegate Carty.
Good uh morning, Man Chair Carty.
Uh yeah, thank you, Speaker. Yes, uh thank you um for this legislation to the sponsor and to the agent. Uh the concern in terms of providing uh this language for NHA is um the purpose for Navajo Housing Authority is to provide housing and supportive services to the Navajo Nation. I would need to know at this point, why should this council, my district, my office, continue to support um NHA in their quest to be our tribal designated housing entity when we're not seeing the funding that is provided to the enterprise be deployed out to the communities and also aware of the challenges with the U.S. Treasury funding? I'm I'm not in a position right now to continue to support um in providing uh this waiver language uh without some commitment from NHA, your management team, your board, in how you are going to immediately provide services, housing services, uh to our people. And uh looking at now um just just the dire need of housing, uh the internal issues and how um housing had a big impact in terms of COVID and our relatives who um are uh stuck with rental assistance and um how that program is supposed to provide relief. And I'll reserve my time. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, my Mike. Three minutes and three seconds. Our time. Now, let me go back to sponsor.
I wish, uh thank you, Speaker. I'm Stasia Do, Tomiya, just thank you for your comments and questions and um I'm gonna go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Waseta. Um I don't know if Ms. Marine Curly is on the line, the CEO, but Mr. Waseta?
Oh, good morning, um. Madam, um Madam, um Eugenia Newton, answer your question. The purpose of this um legislation um is is dealing is for Navo Housing Authority.
So we said, hold on.
Can you hear me?
But yeah, I can hear you. Hold on, Mr. Waseta, there's a, there's a point of privilege. Man Chair Charles Newton?
Uh Speaker, I'm so sorry. Um can I ask really quickly, just for those who are listening in um on social media right now? Um what is a waiver of sovereign immunity? Thank you.
Let me go to Ms. Barbara. Mr. Waseta, hold on real quick. Barbara?
And Speaker, can you ask Mr. Waseta to be on his phone, please? Thank you.
Ms. Barbara? Office of Judiciary Council? Ms. Barbara's not available.
Mi- Mr. Speaker, this is Laura Lee. I don't know uh if she's out of uh service area, but I can speak to the sovereign immunity waiver.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tavai.
Um, thank you. Um, so, um if the um reasoning for let's see, uh the reason the Navo Nation, there needs to be a sovereign immunity waiver is because the Navajo Nation cannot be sued in federal court or any court without an explicit waiver of its sovereign immunity. Um and the uh Title II uh does give the Navo Nation um it does allow the council to waive the sovereign immunity of the council with a two-thirds vote. And so um the Navajo, the National Environmental Protection Act is carrying out the HUD grants and um in as a condition of doing so, the Navajo Nation has to waive its sovereign immunity for suit in federal court. Um and so um in coordination with Navajo Housing Authority um and allowing Navajo Housing Authority to continue with its uh housing funding projects um as a tribally designated entity, because it's a tribally designated entity, um the Navajo Nation has to have a wa- waiver of sovereign immunity. And so um uh I believe that the um waiver of sovereign immunity is expiring and it needs to be extended out for the term of the HUD grant um to September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Um and so that's the reason for this particular legislation to extend that date through September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So what we're doing is complying with the Envit- the National Environmental Protection Act in order to uh for NHA to receive the HUD grants. So that's the reason for this waiver, uh Mr. Speaker. Uh and I'm open for any questions. And Ms. Khan is also here to answer questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tavai. That, let me go back to Mr. Waseta.
Uh Speaker and Council, um I'm glad with um she gave the right information of um this renewed just for the environmental, for what we do as Housing Authority. We, as the Housing Authority, perform our own environmental assessments and environmental studies. So by us doing our own, our work internally, um this document allows us to um complete the environmental versus having it to be completed by HUD, um which will take longer, sir. Thank you.
That concludes ours. Um Mr. Waseta?
Yes.
There's also some questions for Honorable Carty. Answer those two. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um Honorable um Carty, um your question is why should I support this legislation? Well, this legislation is is um it's critical for any type of actions that's um that's deals with Nahaza programs. Um this is a se- similar legislations that the Navo Nation Community Develop um um uses too for them to carry out their ICBG um HUD programs. So this here is just a similar document that allows um us to carry out those programs regarding uh meeting of compliance requirements of um the Environmental Protection Act. Um the other areas of um that your concerns of um of areas in your um in your areas um of being developed. I think those are one areas that I'm not um, I know that there's um a lot of questions about a lot of developments out there not happening. Um and I think that's one thing that we're looking back at in terms of uh some of the areas of of challenges of where we can build. As you know, recently, we just, we had that lateral turn back on which um a lot of Easter agency was challenged with ha- having a water resource. Um so those are some of the areas that that the programs um are reevaluating on some of the new infrastructures that have been uh put in place to support um developments. And this is not um just housing, but economic developments because a lot, if you build homes out there, we gotta have economic developments for individuals to um to support themselves in those units. Um uh the other question with the E-RAP support relief, um that is another program that's being handled by I, I haven't, I don't have any current updates on that, but I can have the individual in charge um pro- uh contact you and give you an update. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you.
I wish, thank you, Mr. Waseta and colleagues um and Speaker. That does conclude our response. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, uh Okay, thank you very much. With that, colleagues, um let me go ahead and go back to the floor. Is there any other further comments or questions, colleagues, at this time?
Sure. Speaker, Otto So, put me in the queue.
Honorable Eugene So, then Honorable Otto So. Let me do so.
I see ya. I, all of one that's on. Just a hundred states. On the great Chris Carter. I see Trump be a citizen, so. I see someone there, now I just get at neck, I say. I'm glad you didn't touch it, it's uh. He come back on me. All that, he quit, then I was on my net. That's not a dog. No, like, that's not it. Way we. I'm a minute. Ah, ah, la la, I'm sure, oh, that's a woman, first case, yes, only, isn't that, oh, come. I land on, I just had in the country, I'm a car, there's a pain on the shin, the sense of if you're gonna put some cash on the ground, materialize, how come we always have a some kind of a a situation there where there's an issue? Uh has already has some rules on it where we can't put anything on the ground, cash wise, materialize it. So I feel that, hey, who make these laws? Is it for us or is it for somebody else? Me, I feel that the government has a trust responsibility to help us out, no matter what. But I'm gonna say, yeah, the bad daddy, hey, so. Or, I know, well, I thought, oh, that's a thing, it's just a little shit, I do know. But lately, we haven't done anything that way. I'm shit. So, ah, we had to, we we had to understand the wrong wall. Need to understand what happened, like me and the channel. I need to understand what happens when people walking there and staying there and coming back again. I need to understand how much was given. That wise, even now, the bonds, just because they should have trust responsibility in any, any way they had to help us out. What's hot, need all roads, need all natural resources, all the whole, and et cetera, don't just call me as nada. They're there to help us out. No matter how long, ah, where wherever we're gonna go, how how many years we're gonna go, wherever we are, they're there to help via a government, to help you. Eh, I go, I should over, had eh, I get this, she's not something, she's not a, she's not a dog, no, she's not a dog, no. These laws. So I don't, I I I thought that were truly trying, none of them, she's not a. They add up, they had, she had, I'm a shiyan, I'm a demon, the government. I let ah, oh, it's a, it's a castle, grab it, I do, I do, it's a, it's a, no, I don't think it's shit, they're there. Yeah, that's, eh, yeah, that's, I'm, it's, I'm, yeah, he all this, I, he use such a term, mission education, actually, I know. For them, she, I see, yeah, she's there, that's a, as a Navajo, it's, it's a, all the, I miss you, so. Somehow, uh to me, we're becoming a contract track. We're making contracts with the government. So if we do something wrong, we're to breach a contract, and they're gonna take our money back or have to pay back some. money back or have to pay back some. I think so, that's, ah, not, not, yeah, that's, 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 Speaker, reserve my time, thank you.
Reserve time at one minute, fifteen seconds. Moving on down. Moving on down, Honorable Otto So.
Yeah, Speaker, you guys hear me first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess, the waiver of the sovereign immunity that NHA is requiring, or is, is asking for, eh, we know that NHA can't do this. It has to get the council's approval on this. And as a presentation made by NHA to the, to this body, I know, eh, eh, it's a requirement to the, to, to the services that they, that is provided. And at the same time, too, it's tied to the Indian Housing Plan and so forth. Okay, I guess, having our trustee, the federal government, asked us to, to do this and be, to be allowed to be sued in federal court. That's probably where, where this is at. We're already under the jurisdiction of the federal court, that's one of my views. Because anything that happens with the nation and, and any sort of pretending to Indian tribes, eh, and these dollars that come down the pipeline as Indian housing dollars are dollars that are tied to the Indian Self-Determination Act, okay, be, be, eh, hold no. So, eh, she, eh, this, eh, 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 in this case, funds pertaining to the, any, to environmental side, which, which this request is made, you know, we have to abide by it. If we don't abide by it, eh, she been, eh, 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 and I think this is a normal, it comes with the business, with, 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 with the, uh, fundings that come up from the federal government. And I look at it as a way of them overseeing how the federal dollars are spent and holding, in this case, NHA responsible for their, you know, if, if they should not abide by these regulations. So, eh, 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 I don't, that, so, it's not as if we don't have the Navajo Nation legal team in place. We do have Department of Justice here in place, if anything comes forth. So, eh, 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 I don't, um, I don't think it's, we're, we're going to be sued in another state, it looks like it's going to be in federal court, in the federal court. So, eh, 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 we have cases that are in the federal courts that actually favor American Indian tribes. So, eh, Ben, you know, ah, ah, it all, oh, it up in, I'm totally, gonna, reserve my time.
Reserve time at one minute, two seconds. That, colleagues. Any other comments or questions at this time, colleagues? If not, let me go ahead and go back to reserve time. I'm Chair Charles Newton, four minutes and thirty-four seconds.
Speaker, this is the first time in a long time that we've had NHA before us, so I feel like there's so many questions that I want to ask, aside from what is being presented to us. So I just need to know, I have a couple of questions that I want, that I want to send to NHA. With the constant turnover with the CEOs, who should I be sending emails to? And what is the name of the new CEO and why haven't we met the new CEO? I reserve my time, Speaker.
One minute and eight seconds. That, and we go back to sponsor.
Thank you, Speaker. Honorable colleagues and staff, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Waceta respond. Mr. Waceta, Honorable Eugene So, Honorable Otto So, and Honorable Eugene Charles Newton. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker and Council. The one thing I'm, I'll answer the questions first with Ms. Newton. Who is the new CEO? The new CEO is Ms. Marie Curly. She's currently not here today, but she has been meeting with the RDC committees in terms of, since her employment here, since February. I will have her make her contact, point of contact to Council and then to get that information of who to, who to write questions to regarding the new executive individual. And Mr. Otto So, regarding the waiver, this is, the legislation before the Navajo Nation Council is a limited waiver, a sovereignty immunity, that's just for us, for the environmental aspects of, under the HUD review, the environmental review requirements, it requires a tribal official, which is the Navajo Nation President, to certify a form, HUD Form 7015 dot 15. And this is a certification regarding any activities that, that are Nahaza related to release the funds that we make a determination that the environment within the Navajo Nation will not be impacted. So this documentation is a requirement by HUD and this extension will just allow us to continue what we have been doing since the early 2000. It's been, like I mentioned earlier, over twenty years, we've been carrying out this with the Navajo Nation President's Office and executives signing the certification document on behalf of the nation to certify the activities related to the environmental review record. So this is a federal requirement, and like I mentioned earlier, capital improvement programs that gets funded through the ICBG program have the same documentation legislation with a limited waiver for their environmental review record. The other question, I didn't get all of it, Mr. So, sorry that I'm not fluent in Navajo, but the questions that we're looking at, the who makes the law? And I don't want to, the biggest things that as a, as we go through a lot of these federal programs, it's the federal, federal programs that establish these guidelines. And these federal funds have, for us, Housing Authority, under the Environmental, National Environmental Protection Act, carries several different areas outside of, that we have to follow, archaeology, environmental wetlands. All of that is one of the things, and they're all federal statutes. Navajo Nation has their own statutes too internally, that mirror a lot of these federal requirements. So a lot of these laws are, are established because of the, the federal funds tie to those programs. Turn it back over to you, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. That does conclude our response.
Hello, Speaker FYI, we can't hear you.
Good morning, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. We're trying to get Speaker on his laptop, kind of went out, so, one second.
Thank you, Mr. Waceta. Sorry, colleagues. Let me, let me go back to, we are on reserve time, so, I'm Chair Amber Crady. Three minutes and three seconds.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Understanding this is a requirement, could we get, as a council, an update on the board? My understanding is, if not, I thought all, if, I thought all of the board members, their terms have expired and waiting for appointments. This is a critical issue in terms of waiving sovereign immunity, and it's not clear what projects are being planned in utilizing their internal environment and surveying, like what projects are you surveying? We, we, we constantly ask for, for information and updates, and yet we see abandoned buildings in your area condemned, we see areas that can, you know, housing improvements that can be made, and, and yet there's no direction, and now there's a possibility of reversion of funding. So I'll need that information, Speaker, and then how this council can move forward to appoint board members who can do their job and help our people with their healthy needs. And I'll reserve my time. Thank you, Speaker.
Reserve time at one minute, fifty-four seconds. That, and we go back to Honorable Freeland.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you for that. Mr. Waceta, if you can respond, please.
Speaker, and Honorable Crady, the update with the board, we have two new board members that's, we have Mr. David Salone, that's been on the board about a year now. We have Ms. Tammy Yazi, she's about half, maybe about six months into her term. And then we have Ms. Carrie Bagay, that we haven't had opportunity to fill. There's two vacant positions that still haven't been filled, which is a financial CPA individual and a business representative individual. So we have two vacancies now. Currently with, I'm not sure, with, if you're all aware on this whole sovereignty immunity, this here was basically, it's been a, we were first requested to present on, on first of the year in January of 2022. So it's been roughly, going on seven months to get this in place. And this is what's, by us not able to certify these environmental for projects out here, that's what's impacting us. The certification is critical when we have, we have projects that we need to get moving in terms of, in terms of repairs. Those, those areas there without having the Navajo Nation President certify those release is what we have. There is, we do have project directories in terms of reports we gave out, we give out, I'm not sure if the last presentation was presented, but this spring, this summer session, NHA will, should, will be providing a quarterly report on activities. So we will put that information in terms of what projects are out there, what is going on, on all the different, twenty-four different program activities. And Speaker, ends my comments.
Thank you very much. With that. With that, colleagues, let me go ahead and continue on with reserve time. Honorable Eugene So, one minute and fifteen seconds. Honorable Eugene So.
Chief Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so, ah, this is, my question is, do we understand why we have the sovereign immunity? Every time when there's some funds coming to us, I will. We're got hooked by the government, in, in, so, all hundreds, all hundreds of houses, so we don't really have the sovereign immunity. What is, since I would like to, to the DOJ, do we have it or not? How good is it anyway, so? And then also by the environmental EPA, also, I need Supreme Court, you know, so, how does that explain with this one here? Eh, eh, yeah, I reserve my time, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Eugene So, reserve time at thirty-two seconds. Honorable Otto So, going back down to you on reserve time with a minute and two seconds.
Thank you very much, Speaker, I was going to ask the question what Eugene So asked, how does the Supreme, US Supreme Court decision on the EPA ruling, how they overturn that decision? That EPA does not have the authority to regulate certain things, and now that regulation is given back to Congress. So want, want to hear what Department of Justice is going to say, reserve my time.
Hey, thirty-five seconds. Let me go to Department of Justice. Anybody on from Department of Justice? Department of Justice. We chat to Department of Justice, I've never had the Department of Justice not on the line during an Navajo Nation Council session. Department of Justice, are you there? Anybody online? All colleagues. Chat to them, Honorable Eugene So and Honorable Otto So. That, as soon as they got on, I'll have further back to them. With colleagues, let me go back to, for any other comments or questions at this time before I go back to reserve time. Now, let me go back to reserve time, Madam Chair Charles Newton, four minutes and eight seconds.
Speaker, I was also hoping to get that response from the Department of Justice, Speaker, I reserve my time.
Reserve time at four oh five. We're down, Madam Chair Ambacardi, one minute and fifty-four seconds.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker, I'm looking for the NHA report, what I would like to know is what is the status of the Shiprock Domestic Violent Shelter? That is, was an NHA project, and we were working on that, and I don't know if there's any more internal issues that need to be addressed so that we can move that project forward, Speaker, and I'll reserve my time, thank you.
Every time at one minute twenty-seven seconds. Go back to, um, sponsor, Honorable Freeland. For response.
If you, Speaker, Honorable, Mr. Waseta, can you go ahead and respond to those questions that were pertained, I know we're waiting to Department of Justice, several of my colleagues, Honorable Eugene So, Honorable Otto So, and Honorable Charles Newton are, were asking about Department of Justice interpretation in regards to the Supreme Court ruling, and as far as Honorable Cotty, if you can respond to Honorable Cotty's questions as well, Mr. Waseta, thank you.
Okay, Honorable, Honorable Cotty, the question regarding the Shiprock Women Shelter, as you know, three years ago, we, we, we went through the process of trying to determine what the status of the, the legal ownership of that, and then at the, at the actual research, we found out that the, the property was under the control of the Navajo Nation. So this, that as we speak now, I'm not sure it's either there was some communication between the chapter, what they wanted to do versus some of the tribal program with social service. So to this date, I have not seen any type of other communication on the actual, what is going to, what, what is going to transpire. We did acquire, we did at the time, two, three years ago, acquire some of the drawings from Mr. Preston from Navajo Nation Design Engineering, that was completed, but as of, as of currently, I haven't, haven't seen anything change, I'm not sure if the ownerships between the chapter and the nations have ever been resolved, but that's, that, that's kind of what I know about the project. I'll turn it back over to Speaker and Honorable Freeland.
Thank you, Mr. Waseta, Speaker, that does conclude our response, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, with that, let me go ahead and go back to the floor. Before I go back to the floor, is there anybody on for Department of Justice at this time? So what's that, you mind, thank you. Colleagues, we did reach out to Attorney General, seems like there's nobody that wants, maybe they have a staff meeting. That, and we're back to reserve time, Honorable Eugene So, even though your questions I answered, thirty-two seconds.
When you're privileged, Speaker?
When privileged, good morning, for the next ten minutes. Madam Chair Charles Newton, four years.
Good morning, Speaker, I'm, I'm looking at my council rules of order, and I know at the committee level that, you know, certain, I guess, documents or even people can be subpoenaed, can we do that? Because it's really a shame that our Attorney General is not at counsel when she should be. And I find it very interesting that there were some delegates, I remember when Perlina Kirk was called and she wasn't available, there were some delegates that got up in arms about it, but with the AG, nobody has said anything. Just that, you know, i- it's really just a shame, you know, that, that that resulted in us relieving our controller. But we do need the AG on the line, Speaker, and so what options do we have to make her part of the special counsel, as you stated, Speaker, this is the first time that DOJ is not on the line for, for special counsel, so maybe, I, I don't know if it's possible to subpoena her, to bring her here, and I hope that it makes the, you know, the, the papers that we have, that counsel actually has to do this to get questions answered from her office, thank you, Speaker.
I don't know if it's possible to get a subpoena today, I've never heard of that, it usually takes some process. Let me go to Office of Justice and Counsel, Ms. Barbara, want to answer that?
Thank you, thank you, Speaker, you are correct, there's a number of steps that go into getting a subpoena. So we, not able to do that today. But will indeed look into it in a future situation. The one thing that I'm curious about, I've texted and emailed the AGs and the assistant AGs, and I have not gotten a response at all. So I'm curious if, if their internet is down or something, I'm not sure if anybody's heard. But anyway, the quick answer to the question is I can't, we can't do a subpoena for today, we could do one in the future if that becomes necessary, thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, that, we're back to Honorable Eugene So, best I can do right now, Honorable Eugene So and Honorable Otto So is get a memo out to Office of Department of Justice with those, with that question resulting from the Supreme, United States Supreme Court action ruling yesterday on EPA. National EPA, to clarify, US EPA. With that, let me go back to Honorable Eugene So, thirty-two seconds. Going twice. That, Honorable Eugene So, going three times, we're down, Honorable Otto So, thirty-five seconds, honor reserve time.
Thank you very much, Speaker, I'm going to reserve my time.
Thirty-three seconds. Any other comments, questions, colleagues at this time? Before I go back to reserve time. If none. Go back to Madam Chair Charles Newton, four minutes and five seconds.
Thank you, Speaker, I'm still waiting for the email addresses, reserve my time.
Let me go back to the, I think that was the, you get that? Let me go back to your agent there, Honorable Freeland, to address a question about emails. Who does he address?
All right, thank you, Speaker, Honorable, Mr. Waseta. Speaker, I think we might have lost him.
Mr. Waseta? I see him, I see his phone, maybe if you press star six, Mr. Waseta?
Yes, did you, did you get my, do you hear me?
I can barely hear you now.
So, Speaker, I had the executive assistants with Ms. Marine Curly's executive office will be emailing the contact information for Ms. Curly, she'll be sending it out to Ms. Newton, and I had her, asked her to send it out to all the council.
Okay. And that's coming from?
Doring, Doring Yazi will be sending out that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go back to, uh, reserve time, Madam Chair Ambacardi, one minute twenty-seven seconds.
Yes, Speaker, I don't have the report from NHA, so I'd like to motion to table this legislation until the summer session, so our questions could be answered, and we receive the documents, Speaker, I'll reserve my time, thank you.
Second, Charles Newton.
There's a motion to table legislation, where we, zero zero one six dash two two until summer session, where we get the documents.
Speaker, point privilege.
Before I go back to Madam Chair to clarify documents, a point of privilege of Honorable Freeland.
Thank you, Speaker, my question pertains to the tabling motion, if it proceeds and is, is successful, will this legislation be placed under all business on the agenda for summer session, that's my question, thank you.
Yes, yeah, item will be under all business, Honorable Freeland. That, let me go back to Madam Chair Cotty, all the documents, can you clarify documents, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, thank you, Speaker, the documents are, Mr. Waseta, the agent referred to NHA report that gave a breakdown of the projects that NHA is currently or will be working on, which will cover this waiver period.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm looking for that information, I don't have it, and, Speaker, I do have a question, will this legislation be put on the agenda if that information is not available?
Thank you. Did you get there? All right, with that, then, the tabling motion on legislation zero zero one six dash two two until summer session to provide ample time for Navajo Housing Authority to provide their updated report on project breakdown regarding the waiver period. That, colleagues, there is a motion to table legislation zero zero one six dash two two until summer session. Madam Chair Ambacardi has raised that motion, second by Madam Chair Charles Newton, that colleagues, let me go to Honorable Freeland. You do have three minutes on the board as a motion party, or as a sponsor of legislation to state your position.
Thank you, Speaker, Honorable, colleagues and staff, good afternoon, appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion, very important discussion. A lot of questions, of course, were brought forth in light, in regards to the, especially a huge ruling in the US Supreme Court yesterday involving the US EPA. Now, of course, my colleagues, you do have that right to ask these questions and to, to seek further additional information, but just, just to let you know, we are on the time clock with this request too. It is a request for an extension of a current waiver that's already in place, so it's just a matter of requesting an extension of the current waiver of sovereign immunity that's currently being held in place right now. So I want just to let you all know that, and we do have to comply with, you know, anytime we do get federal monies, we do have to comply with the NEPA process, and, you know, there's no way, there's no way around that. These are one of those instances where we have to deal with the, the NEPA process, so, seen it before with other areas, including the BIA, dealing with our LOTS, when we have to deal with. when we have to deal with roads or other matters in relation to infrastructure as well. So I just wanted to conclude with that and say thank you, Speaker, and I'll go ahead and end there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That, colleagues, there's a motion to table. Let's go to board.
Honorable Almar Begay. I'm sorry, Honorable Almar Begay is excused. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. did not vote. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. votes red. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Paul Begay votes red. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown did not vote. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti votes green via text. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Red. I vote red.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes red. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Vote red.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes red. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Vote red.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Hino votes red.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes red. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes red.
Honorable Vince James votes red. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes red.
Honorable Rick Ness votes red. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Red.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes red. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So did not vote. Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika.
Red.
Honorable Edison Winika votes red. Honorable Edmund Yazi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair.
Delegate Yellow Hair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair votes red, going back up. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown did not vote. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So did not vote. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote.
I vote red. This is Thomas Walker.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. changed his vote to red. Speaker, with a vote of three in favor, fifteen opposed, and Speaker not voting.
That, colleagues, three in favor, fifteen opposed, speaking not voting motion fails. That, we're back on the main motion, colleagues. I am moving on down. I'm on reserve time. So Honorable Eugene So. Moving on second. Thirty-two seconds. Moving on down. Honorable Otto So, thirty-three seconds.
Thank you very much. Well, I think this is just a requirement of NHA to what they have to follow in their process to build homes and so forth. Right now, I'm ready to move forward with my vote and waive the rest of my time, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, colleagues. Any other comments or questions at this time on legislation zero, zero, one, six, dash, two, two? There's none. Going back to reserve time. Madam Chair Charles Newton, four minutes and two seconds.
Thank you, Speaker and colleagues. I always hesitate whenever we do a waiver of sovereign immunity because it opens us up to any type of lawsuit from the federal and the state government, which is why I'm always asking questions about deals with the waiver of sovereign immunity. In this case, you know, having NHA come before us and state that this is for the environmental studies, which NHA does do, and if had were to do it, it would take longer. But I think that it kind of opens the door to a bigger issue, and that is homes. We are not seeing homes being developed on the Navajo Nation. So we have NHA before us asking counsel to waive sovereign immunity for them, and yet we're not seeing homes. And I know that NHA has in the past gotten in trouble by the federal government, and we've been given wish-washy information back and forth, as well as NHA board paying themselves for work that was never completed or never done. So when it comes to certain enterprises coming, or actually when it comes to waiver of sovereign immunity, you know, I think we should be asking those questions of what does this mean and how is this going to affect the Navajo Nation? And the reason, you know, is if the Navajo Nation were to be sued at any time, the entire Navajo people are sued. Our funds are jeopardized, and, you know, the funds that we do receive from the federal government are jeopardized as well. In this case, I think that, you know, just coming forward and saying that this is done all the time is not really a good reason for us to do it today. And right now, you know, I'm a little bit worried about what this is going to mean for the Navajo Nation, and then most importantly, you know, whether, like, what kind of suits it's going to open us up to, the potential suits. So I'm ready to vote, Speaker, and I'm just going to go ahead and waive the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair Charles Newton. Moving on down. Madam Chair Amber Cotty, one minute and fourteen seconds.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. Still waiting on that report from NHA. What I do want to state is in terms of how the council approaches sovereign immunity, what questions should be answered by the enterprise to ensure that every step is taken to prevent a lawsuit? Also, in looking at what is the project, what are the plans, and what projects will NHA be using under this timeframe is important. As counsel, we also have the authority to make directives, and ultimately, it goes back to the tribal housing designated entity. If NHA is not ready to provide those essential services to Navajo Nation, then leadership, we need to provide alternatives to our community members, our first responders who are, who need a home, our teachers, our doctors, our families, our elders. And that is the role that NHA should be playing, that vital component in all of housing development on Navajo Nation, and we're just not seeing it. We're going to see it during the ARPA discussions and the enterprise following. Thank you, Speaker.
That, colleagues. That, I don't have anybody with reserve time. We're back to for any other further comments or questions, colleagues.
This is Delegate James.
Delegate James.
Yes, another speaker and the members of the council. In regards to Shumasona, Honorable Amber Cotty's request, when will we be able to receive that document? Reserve my time. Thank you.
There's time for forty-six. With that, go back to Honorable Freeland.
Thank you, Speaker. Honorable, colleagues and staff, good afternoon. I think we can officially say that now, Speaker. It's fifteen minutes after the hour. The comments and concerns raised by Shadja, Honorable Charles Newton, and Shmea Janwell, Cotty, and then, of course, my brother, Honorable Vince James. Thank you for those comments and questions and concerns. I'm going to give the time to Mr. Osida and have him have given opportunity to respond to those concerns and those questions that were raised by my colleagues. Mr. Osida?
Good afternoon, Speaker and Honorable Freeland. First, to answer Ms. Cotty and Vince James, I have asked our grants office to send you out the 2022 Indian Housing Plan. That Indian Housing Plan that was approved earlier in the year is what we're working on now. And the sovereignty immunity impacts that where we can't issue the actual release to initiate the projects. So I'm going to ask Ms. Nellie Gilmore to email that out to counsel. Each year, we perform, develop an Indian Housing Plan, and each year, there's specific locations that is being, projects will be carried out. There's roughly about twenty-four different project programs that NHA provides. And so in this Indian Housing Plan that have currently, that will be sent out to you. I'm not sure, it's lunchtime now, so I'm not sure who's in the office. Since today's, it's the Friday of a holiday, but I will get that information out to you. And so you have a clear understanding where, what programs are being carried out, what locations, there's areas in there. Some of the areas, what we have for vacant unit being repaired for public rental to homeownership, that's all spelled out into those programs in the Indian Housing Plan. I'll turn it back over to you, Honorable Freeland and Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Osida. Speaker, should we have Mr. Osida forward that information to Mr. Rico? And Mr. Rico can turn around and send that out to the members of the Twenty-Fourth Navalation Council?
Yes, or to Ms. Yazi.
Mr. Osida, if you could have Ms. Gilmore provide that document of the Indian Housing Plan to the Chief of Staff, Cheryl Yazi, as well as to Mr. Manuel Rico, and then they'll turn around and send that out to the members of the Twenty-Fourth Navalation Council. If you could please make sure that does happen. Thank you.
Honorable Freeland and Speaker, I'm doing an email to Ms. Nellie to send it to Mr. Rico and Speaker, and copy yourself, so then we distribute to the full Navalation Council.
Right, and Chief of Staff Cheryl Yazi. Thank you.
Okay.
That does conclude our response, Speaker.
And thank you. That. Back to four. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Thank you. Go back to reserve time. Honorable Vince James, four minutes and forty-six seconds on reserve time.
On Speaker, can we get the timeframe on when we would be receiving the documents? Or given a time that would be helpful to go into recess until we receive those documents. Reserve my time.
There are time at four minutes, thirty-five seconds.
Thank you, Speaker. My brother, Honorable Vince James. I'm going to go ahead and give that to Mr. Osida to respond, to answer that question in regards to how the timeline as far as receiving the report or the information that was requested. Mr. Osida?
Honorable Freeland, to answer this delegate, Honorable James. I sent an email out to Ms. Nellie Gilmore. I'm not sure, like I said, mentioned it's lunchtime, but I'm following up with her to see the timeframe. Bet you can send that out to Mr. Rico and Chief of Staff Cheryl Yazi.
Okay, Mr. Osida, do we anticipate that will be done by this afternoon, early this afternoon?
I'm hoping, Honorable, I'm hoping that we can get it done within the next thirty minutes to an hour.
Okay, thank you. Speaker, that does conclude our response to Honorable Vince James.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Speaker. This is Captain Bolzowski from DOJ. Just wanted to announce myself on the call.
Thank you. That, colleagues, Honorable Vince James. Before I go back to you, is there any other further comments or questions, colleagues? All right, we go back to Honorable Vince James. Honorable James, four minutes and thirty-five seconds.
Speaker, I'm kindly requesting to go into recess for at least thirty minutes until we get the documents. Reserve my time.
Honorable Vince James, I would recognize that, but there was a request for that information, and it was going into at least a tabling motion that vote was fit, that vote failed by a large majority of counsel. So in this case, I'm going to leave that up to counsel if you want to go into recess. So colleagues, I'm will raise that as a going to recess by Honorable Vince James. Is there a second or thirty minutes? Honorable Otto So. Vote, I'm going into recess. I'm leaving it up to counsel. To the Senate, can you please mute your phone?
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Almar Begay is excused. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Votes red. Honorable Paul Begay.
That was a Paul Begay votes red.
Honorable Paul Begay votes red. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
I vote green. This is Delegate Charles Newton. I vote green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bakrati.
Shaddai, this is Delegate Amber Canes Bakrati. I'll vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bakrati votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
They vote red.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes red. Honorable Mark Freeland.
I vote red.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes red. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Pernell Halona.
The honor votes red.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Jamie Hino.
He votes red.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes red. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes red.
Honorable Rick Nez votes red. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Red.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Red.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes red. Honorable Otto So.
Green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Eugene So.
Not voting.
Honorable Eugene So did not vote. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
I vote red.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes red. Honorable Edison Winika.
Red.
Honorable Edison Winika votes red. Honorable Ed Minyazi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red. Going back up. Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Eugene So did not. Honorable Eugene. Honorable Eugene So votes green. Speaker with a vote of seven in favor, thirteen opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Seven favor, thirteen opposed. Speaking of voting motion fails, I'm going into recess. With that, back on, if you're just joining us, or if you really getting on the line this morning, I think of this afternoon, as Honorable Freeland indicated. Time now is twelve twenty-six PM. We are on new business item number B, legislation zero zero one six dash two-two. Sponsor, it's by Honorable Freeland. With that, colleagues, we do have at this time, nobody else in the queue. Is there any other further comments on zero zero one six dash two-two before I go back to reserve time? Not, let me go ahead and go back to reserve time. Honorable Vince James, four minutes and thirty-five seconds.
Yeah, that's another speaker. The documents would be very helpful. Actually, I need, or you, or that they're loud or, or that they're loud. As RDC and other committees, she, they received these documents. So they received the report from NHA Law and Order Committee. We don't, we don't get these kind of reports. Um, what do, I, I showed the, eh, 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 banana, or she caught though. Down there, the work session, ban, ban, see, kay. It down to what I, na, so, so, eh, 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 what do?
Okay.
Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr., votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. votes red. Via text. Honorable Otto So.
Red.
Honorable Otto So votes red. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, don't scare you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr.
I vote red.
Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. votes red. Honorable Edison Winika.
Red.
Honorable Edison Winika votes red. Honorable Edmund Yazi votes, uh, is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red. Going back up. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes red.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes red. Honorable Purnell Holona.
Holona votes red.
Honorable Purnell Holona votes red. Speaker with the vote of five in favor and fifteen opposed and speaker not voting.
Thank you very much. That colleagues, five in favor, fifteen opposed, and speaker not voting motion fails. On the adjournment. With that, we are back on to new business. I don't know be legislation zero zero one six dash two two. Colleagues, again, this is a two thirds legislation. Moving on down. Any other comments, questions? Before I go back to reserve time. Uh, we'll go back to reserve time. Honorable Vince James, three minutes and seventeen seconds.
Uh, we still have, uh, no documents or no email. Speaker, preserve my time.
Honorable Vince James has indicated, uh, I'll go back to honorable Freeland, but those documents are being gathered. I don't know. If those are gonna be, if they will even be ready today.
Yeah.
Honorable Freeland.
Um, thank you, Speaker. Um, our excellent colleagues and staff, uh, good afternoon. Um, Mr. Wasita, if we could, um, maybe check with Ms. Gilmore once more on the request that was made forth by my colleagues in regards to the I H P. Um, when will that be sent out? Uh, thank you, Mr. Wasita.
Uh, Honorable Freeland and, uh, Speaker, I, uh, she's back from Mr. Gilmore. Uh, she's, she was in route back from Gallup from a meeting, so, um, she was saying she was gonna be back to office about one, about a little after one o'clock. But I'm ac- I'm actually, um, in contact with another staff to, um, to get that out within the next five minutes. Okay?
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Wasita. Um, Speaker, um, we also do have Ms. Maureen Curly on the line. Um, I don't know if we want to give her a little bit of time to say something as a, uh, Chief Executive Officer, Officer of N H A. Ms. Curly?
She your agent?
Yeah, she's the second agent.
Ms. Curly?
Yes, good morning, Speaker Damon. Okay, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that I was, um, already online. Um, good morning, members of the Navajo Nation, twenty fourth council, Speaker Damon, and also those that are listening in. This is Maureen Curly, the CEO for Navajo Housing Authority. I do know that you guys are discussing the, uh, projects for the, um, Navajo Nation. Uh, those projects are really under, um, a lot of, um, revisions. And, um, there is a lot of, um, of, of funding that has been, um, identified to finish projects. However, I want to ensure you that this legislation that's on the table right now, none of those projects can begin if we don't get that legislation passed. Every project that Navajo Housing Authority has on the table, which is several ready to go, cannot start until this legislation has been approved. There are a, a total of over, if I can remember correctly right now, for twenty twenty-two, there's over, um, forty, forty million dollars worth of projects that's on hold because we don't have this legislation, um, approved yet. We've been trying to get this legislation through council since April. And so, uh, it's very important that I mentioned to council that, um, if you could just, um, give us a little bit of time to get you the Indian housing plan for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, or yeah, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we can get those over to you. As Dwayne has says, that has said that the Indian housing plan for twenty twenty-two is really, um, uh, held up because of the, um, environmental and legislation on the table right now. So, um, there are other, uh, ARPA fund monies that we had received from HUD that's also on the table in order for, um, again, in order for us to get completed. This legislation needs to be approved. Um, if there's any questions, I can answer them to the best of, uh, my knowledge. I am not in the office right now, so I don't have, um, access to my systems, but I can, um, answer the best that I can. Thank you. My, um, turning it back over to you, Council Freeman.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Um, Speaker, that does conclude our response. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Freeland. That, go ahead and go back to before. Any other comment? Oh, Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Floor's yours.
Yes, it's the Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council, yeah. Auto, uh, 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 auto, auto, um, yeah, come by you. But all of these debate, they should vote that they, this is going to come before the Navajo Nation Council again. Oh, I got the, 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 let's move on to care of very important, uh, yeah, legislation. But, uh, they're the king, you can't, uh, that would allow. So it's not, it, uh, it's, it's, so, so, that council, no, I don't, I don't owe you. She is the one that's not going to be ended, just not, I, I don't, you know, that is, that is, that is, I will question this debate, uh, Speaker. One thing, okay, yeah, I will wait my time. Let's vote.
Good afternoon, Speaker Damon. This is Catherine Bolovski from Navajo DOJ. I just wanted to confirm if there were any questions for DOJ that I've been asked previously regarding this legislation?
Uh, cheers, Speaker. It's, it's, delegate yellow here. Those six.
Staff, is Speaker available or does he need somebody to take over?
I, I'm here. I'm just, uh, trying to deliberate on the, uh, motion to, uh, cease debate. Um, colleagues, uh, the, um, the, the, we started this debate at eleven o'clock, um, there's been a couple of requests, uh, items that were requested. Unfortunately, those items are not being presented at this time probably due to the fact that those, that need time in order for N H A to collectively produce a document. And that does take some time. Uh, I, I understand that process, just as if we were requested to produce a document, it would take some time. Um, moving forward, colleagues, um, there hasn't been ample time enough to say that we've only been debating this for an hour and a half. Uh, there's been um, and even, yeah. Even though, uh, R D C, this was unanimously passed uh, at Navikietik Committee, this was unanimously passed by nineteen in favor, zero opposed, colleagues. But, uh, in doing that, at this time at Navajo Nation Council setting, we've only been debating this for an hour and a half. And I, I do believe that there isn't a balance on this yet. So, I'm not gonna recognize your motion to cease debate, Honorable Yellowhair. Moving on down, Honorable Charlene So, a new colleague in the queue. Honorable Charlene So, floor's yours.
Chair, I was gonna make the motion to cease debate, but, um, I guess I'll just go to reserve time and see how this plays out. Thank you.
Uh, let me, let me do this. Motion cease debate, uh, twelve, was it, we're reserving time at four minutes and one fifty-five. Honorable Vince James, three minutes, seventeen seconds. Are you willing to waive that time?
Bill, no documents, no speaker. Thank you.
Honorable Charlene So, your, uh, reserve time's four minutes, fifty-five seconds. That colleagues, any other comments, questions at this time?
Speaker, Delegate Daniel So.
Chairman Daniel So on the motion. The motion is zero zero one six dash two two. Floor's yours.
Yes, uh, thank you. And I appreciate the, the delegate's, uh, concerns about the listing of projects. And then one of those items where, oh, Navajo Housing Authority kinda, um, when they need something, they need it ASAP. When a delegate needs information on a project, uh, we can't get it ASAP. And that's a big concern. Um, and for this wa- limited waiver of sovereign immunity, I really feel like at the regular orderly session of the Navajo Nation Council is an appropriate time to address a major, major decision. The waiver of sovereign immunity, meaning if N H A somehow makes a mistake, then the feds can take us to federal court. And it's not to be taken lightly. And for that reason, I really feel like uh, this item needs to be taken to the summer session. Uh, with that, Speaker, I make the motion to table for it to come up at the Navajo Nation Summer Session.
When are Navajo Nation?
Uh, thank you. That would be my motion.
Colleagues, a motion to table legislation zero zero one six dash two two until summer session. Even with that, again, the motion table by Honorable Chairman, uh, Daniel So until summer session, find ample time for Navajo Housing Authority to provide update report on the project breakdown regarding the waiver period, the also debate of legislation at the regular council session. We were sovereign union, that. Second by Honorable Vince James. That colleagues, going back to Honorable Freeland, three minutes.
Thank you, Speaker. Arashna, Arashna Che, thank you for the, uh, motion to the table and understandably, um, your concerns as well. Um, Speaker, there should have been a, um, email that was sent to, um, Chief of Staff Yazi and Mr. Rico in relation to the I H P. So that should be forwarded to our colleagues once those emails do, uh, once the Chief of Staff and Mr. Rico, those do see those emails uh, from N H A, those have been sent to the I H P. Um, colleagues and staff, just to let you know, and I, I appreciate the dialogue and discussions we're having today. Um, it's a very critical juncture for N H A and, um, you know what, the CEO mentioned as far as forty million dollars being at stake, um, being on hold. Um, with R D C, um, we did have a work session with, with N H A and, um, you know, a very good thorough discussion with the new leadership. And to understand the direction and the vision that the new C H O brings forth is really, uh, important. And there is a lot of opportunity and there's a lot of hope for N H A now going forward. And, you know, I just want to encourage my colleagues to please, um, uh, uh, work with N H A and give them a chance, give the new CEO a chance. Um, I have confidence and faith in her. I know she's gonna take N H A in the right direction. Um, but, you know, we, we gotta give, we gotta get N H A back on their feet again. And, you know, we just have to leave, uh, things that occurred in the past and learn from it and move on. And, you know, we just gotta, uh, understand that, that it's a new opportunity for N H A. And I H P says a lot. Um, these projects that are being put forth by N H A, forty million dollars is a very good start. And it's a right direction. And I just want to encourage my colleagues to understand that and really emphasize that, you know, we have new leadership and new vision at N H A. So, uh, Speaker, I, I do conclude my response right there and, and, um, uh, understand the concerns as well. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. That colleagues, good board. Table motion.
Public Speaker?
Uh, and tables legislation zero zero one six dash two two until summer session to provide ample time for Navajo Housing Authority to provide an updated report of project listings regarding the waiver period. The, quote, and Chair Charles.
What point of privilege?
We're raising our point of privilege while we're voting.
Yeah, yes, sir. I, I'm, I'm aware of that. Thank you, Speaker. Um, my, my point of privilege is to ask N H A the question, if we approve this today, how many houses will be built tomorrow? As in like July second, uh, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Honorable Freeland.
Uh, Speaker, I'll let N H A answer that question. Thank you. Mr. Wasita.
Honorable Wasita, I'm, Mr. Wasita. Star six.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I pressed button, wrong button. Um, currently, we've been, since, if you look at the legislation, we've been trying to get this thing approved since January of twenty twenty-two. And currently, we have been, we had over two hundred units that were going to release the construction part to put them into construction. In part of that is the two hundred units is the communities that we have, um, units going up in Talania Lake, Lookachigai, um, Rock Springs, um, and then in Windorop. And in part of that too, we have some scattered site units across the reservation. So there's over two hundred units that we need this documentation to proceed. And, uh, we've been trying to, um, to acquire the authorization from council since January, since the legislation was presented to be heard. And we're, I'm seven months into, uh, organization's seven months into it, and it's even trying to get this, um, this formality, this requirement to proceed with the projects. Um, also too, just, um, uh, we had send the doc, the Indian housing plan to Mr. Rico and Mr. Yazi, which was, they're gonna be disseminating out to council. Now, now, Indian housing plan outlines all of the projects and the program activities. Turn it back over, Speaker. Mr. Freeland, Speaker Damon.
Hello?
Thank you very much, uh, Wasita.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, Speaker, I was trying to call a point of order.
Well, we couldn't hear you.
Really? Cause on my end, it looked like, uh, you could see my little microphone going up and down, which means that, uh, that I could be heard.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear you tell just now. So what is your point of order?
Uh, Speaker, my point of order was that, um, I asked a specific question. And, um, oh, and just so you're clear, Speaker, on Facebook, everybody's saying that they could hear me when I was trying to call the point of order. Um, but I, I, I will say, uh, Speaker, that my question was, if this is approved today, how many homes are gonna be starting to be built on July second, twenty twenty-two? Not how many homes are gonna eventually be built, but how many homes will be, um, will they start construction on, on July second, twenty twenty-two?
Hey. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, no one heard a point of order in the chambers. So with that, clarifying your point of order now, uh, Mr. Wasita.
Uh, Speaker, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
To answer the questions is, um, we have, um, not completed by July fifteenth, but going into contract. And that's the two hundred units that we are going through the process. So that's the, the three communities and some scattered sites that we have, um, in, in the hopper, sir. Turning it back to you.
You. That colleagues, we're voting on table motion.
Honorable Elmer Begay is excused. Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr.
Question of privilege.
Key Allen votes red.
Question of privilege, Delegate Daniel So.
Chairman Daniel So, what is your point of privilege while we are voting? Good afternoon.
Will the this legislation, if adopted, will it be signed into law July second? My point of, uh, privilege is, this thing doesn't take effect until the President signs. Thank you.
Uh, your question of privilege, Chairman, um, the soonest, uh, we could probably get this out is, as if Office Legislative Council reviews it, um, maybe today, but for sure tomorrow, the legislation would be certified, uh, by the Speaker's office and final authority is here at, is here at the, um, the legislative side. This doesn't go across the street. Navajo Nation Council is final authority. That, continue voting, colleagues.
Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr. votes red. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Paul Begay did not vote. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Nathaniel Brown did not vote. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Kennesba-Crawdy.
Uh, Senator, this is Delegate Crawdy, and I will vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Kennesba-Crawdy will vote green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr.
A point of privilege, Delegate Crawdy.
Good afternoon, uh, Bobby Home, this is home on point of privilege, Madam Chair, Crawdy.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I'm reviewing the legislation and, um, with your answer regarding that council's final authority, was this then reviewed by, um, legis- or like Department of Justice, or what? What Navajo Nation attorneys reviewed this document? Thank you, Speaker.
We go to Office Legislative Council.
Mister Speaker, this is Mariana Khan.
Yes, Miss Khan, go ahead. Floor's yours.
I drafted the legislation and I looked at the previous, um, resolutions that were approved by the Navajo Nation Council, the previous legislation, and, um, it, and as you will find in the findings, let me pull up the findings. The findings of the legislation say that there's some, um, uh, granting approval of the limited sovereign immunity and authorizing the President to sign was started, uh, with CAP, C A P dash twenty-one dash zero five, twenty oh five, twenty ten was another resolution, twenty fourteen was another resolution, and twenty seventeen was the last resolution. Those are four Navajo Nation Council resolutions. And, um, that is, then I, I looked at the, um, uh, HUD Form seven zero one five dash one five. Um, that, that is, was my review, Mister, Mister Speaker. And I'll be here for you.
Thank you. That colleagues, we are mo- voting on tableing legislation zero zero one six dash two two. Continue voting.
Oh. Speaker Damon, this is Catherine Bolovski from DOJ. I'm sorry, I just wanted to, um, respond to Delegate Crawdy's question, if I may.
Yes, Catherine, I suppose I'll ask you, floor's yours. Yes, Catherine, I suppose I'll ask you, forge yours.
Thank you, Speaker. That the, the current legislation did not get submitted or reviewed by DOJ. And so we just haven't had a chance to review it. I don't know if that's a concern of the delegates, but if it is, we're happy to review it if it is submitted to us by somebody. Thank you.
You with that, continue voting colleagues, table and motion.
A point of privilege, Speaker.
Point of privilege, Mentor Charles Newton, what is your point of privilege this afternoon?
Speaker, is it councils, is it normally done this way? Where, where we do not have Department of Justice or Office of Legislative Council review the current waiver of sovereign immunity? I'm sorry, Speaker, but accepting previous waivers of sovereign immunity just because it was approved by previous council, to me, is, is really concerning because this is the Navajo people's money. And so DOJ hasn't even approved it yet, Speaker. So is there precedent set where council has approved the waiver of sovereign immunity without the review of Office of Legislative Council and Department of Justice? Thank you, Speaker.
We go to Office Legislative Council.
Mr. Speaker, this is Mariana Khan again. I do not have a history of reviews, whether or not previous resolutions passed by the Navajo Nation Council, how many of those dealing with sovereign immunity have had the review by the Department of Justice? I do not have access to that historical documentation, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Bolzowski, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Thank you, Speaker, I, I don't have anything to add. I would just say that I do think that NHA isn't required to submit their legislation to DOJ for review because they are an enterprise. But again, however, we're always happy to review any legislation that council or an enterprise would like us to look at before it's submitted or voted on.
Thank you very much for that colleagues, continue voting.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Red.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes red. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Red.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes red. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Halona votes red.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes red. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Jamie votes red.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes red. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jim votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes red.
Honorable Rick Ness votes red. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Chief.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Red.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes red. Honorable Otto So.
Green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, God, this is our show.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika.
Red.
Honorable Edison Winika votes red. Honorable Edmund Yasi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red. Going back up, Honorable Paul Begay votes green via text. I'm sorry. Honorable Paul Begay votes red via text. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes red.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes red. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Delegate Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote. Speaker, with the vote of six in favor, 13 opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you colleagues, six in favor, 13 opposed, Speaker not voting, motion fails. That colleagues, we are back on the main motion, legislation 0016 dash 22. Question of privilege. Honorable Freeland, you did indicate that Chief of Staff Miss Yazi and Mr. Rico were receiving something. We have, they have not received anything to distribute to council at this time.
Okay, Speaker, Mr. Waseda, if you could follow up, please?
Honorable Yat, I'm following up, there were several, there was three emails that were sent to them. So I'll, I'll check. All mine says that they were delivered from what, those two from Miss Yazi and one from myself. I'll check on it.
colleagues, might be, Navajo Nation emails might be down or something too as well right now. Getting word that the ice box is down. The what? It's still down? colleagues, we might not get those emailed out. The emails are down here in Windorok at this time.
Speaker, this is the way.
Yes, Mr. Waseda.
The email confirmation is that 12:43 PM was delivered to Mr. Rico and Miss Yazi. So I'm not sure if, if what has happened, but I got a, a delivery note that it was delivered, email was sent, 12:43. Thank you, sir.
Our, our IT colleagues, our IT staffs working together with Senate IT Staff Office already get that information, colleagues. With that, any other further comments or questions at this time, colleagues? We're back on the main motion. If not, we'll go back to reserve time. Honorable Vince James, three minutes and 17 seconds.
Yeah, it's not letting members of the council, due to technical difficulties, I'd like to just motion to adjourn, thank you, reserve my time.
3:05 PM. Legislation 0016. Sorry. Too many things going on.
1:11.
3:05 is your reserve time. The time to motion to adjourn is at 1:11 PM, sorry colleagues. One doing too many things at once. There's a motion by Honorable Vince James to adjourn second, colleagues. Is there a second?
Delegate Daniel So.
Second, my Chairman Daniel So. That, let's go to board.
Speaker, a point of order, Kelly.
Point of order, Honorable Kelly Begay.
Speaker, I think we're just kind of going round and round. Could I ask, Assistant Counsel, how many times will we need defeat a table and motion? If not, we're going to be doing this all day long. Table and motion, motion to adjourn, and so on. I think you need to call this particular situation to call it to a vote speaker. That's my point of order.
Hey, thank you, Honorable Kelly Begay. As your colleagues have the right five minutes to hold on any motion. Honorable Vince James has his right to raise any adjournment or table and motion within that, within that timeframe. There's no rules say that a delegate can only, can raise a motion only once, whether that be a table and motion or, or adjournment motion. But I am going to recognize if there's a table, because this is to keep the council rules of order continuously flowing and keep going on the floor to keep the council flowing. I will recognize next cease debate if this doesn't, if this adjournment fails. That, one of adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Honorable Almar Begay is excused. Honorable Alan Begay Jr.
Once again, red.
Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. votes red. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes red.
Honorable Paul Begay votes red. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes red.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes red. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Green. Delegate Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Hi, Deputy Senator, this is Delegate Carty, and I'll vote green, thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Red.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes red. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Red.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes red. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Purnell votes red.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes red. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Jamie votes red.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes red. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jim votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes red.
Honorable Rick Ness votes red. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
The chief.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes red. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Red.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes red. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote red.
Honorable Charlene So votes red. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So did not vote. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, God, this is our show.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika.
Red.
Honorable Edison Winika votes red. Honorable Edmund Yasi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red. Going back up, Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. did not vote. Speaker, with the vote of six in favor, 13 opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you very much, six in favor, 13 opposed, and speaking of voting, motion fails. That colleagues, I'm going to go back to reserve time on the main motion. I have.
Point of privilege, Vice Chair Smith.
What? Honorable Herman Daniels, I mean, Vice Chair Smith. Vice Chair Smith. Your point of privilege?
Speaker, this is Winika.
Vice Chair Smith.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Speaker, this is a point of privilege. We have a total of 19 on the floor. If we do two thirds, and I know that this legislation requires two thirds, what is the two third count on that? And also, if we do go into another cease debate, I need that clarification, thank you.
If you're going into a cease debates, the two thirds of the voting body and there, right now, there's, there's in between 19 to 20. So let's say if there was 20, you would need 14 delegates to cease debate. But on the legislation itself, because it's the two thirds legislation, you're required, that, that requirement's automatically always going to be 16 votes, two thirds of the entire council. If there's 19 on the floor, just on a cease debate, though, it would be going down to 13 votes. That colleagues, going back to reserve time. Honorable Charlene So, four minutes and 55 seconds.
Thank you, Speaker, I would like to make a request to cease debate, make a motion to cease debate, reserve time, thank you.
Thank you, Winika.
Thank you. Colleagues, in keeping the decorum, making sure there's quorum of the, of this, and continuing the flow, I'm going to recognize the cease debate. There, this legislation passing, and as we at RDC passing, and as we at Apit Committee, and that's where the debate, majority of the debate usually does happen, and it passed by 19 in favor, zero opposed colleagues. That colleagues, before I go do that, I'm going to ask, as I always do, the individuals who are holding cease, are holding time. Honorable Vince James, do you, are you willing to waive your time?
Speaker, no.
I cannot, I, you were like a robot, I couldn't hear you, there was this. Honorable Vince James, are you willing to waive?
I can't, now that this is robot, Honorable James. No, oh, I will not waive my time.
Thank you, Honorable James. That colleagues, there's a motion that I'm going to recognize, Honorable Charlene So, cease debate on legislation 0016 dash 22, is there a second?
Second, Winika.
Honorable Winika, that colleagues, cease debate motions, undebatable, we're aboard.
Honorable Almar Begay is excused. Honorable Almar B. Gay is excused. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior did not vote. Honorable Paul B. Gay.
Delegate Paul B. Gay votes green.
Honorable Paul B. Gay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes red.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes red. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti.
Uh, Shada, this is Delegate Amber Canes Bacotti. I'll vote red. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti votes red. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Pernell votes green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Hino votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Chair votes red.
Honorable Vince James votes red. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Junior votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes red. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote red.
Honorable Daniel So votes red. Honorable Eugene So.
Vote to Nana Shahu.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edison Winika did not vote. Honorable Edmund Yasi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair.
Delegate Yellow Hair votes green.
Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair votes green. Going back up. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior votes. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Speaker with a vote of fourteen in favor, five opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you very much, colleagues. That, fourteen in favor, five opposed, and, uh, Speaker not voting on, uh, motion to cease debate on legislation zero zero one six dash two two. Motion passes. That colleagues, going to the board with no amendments on legislation zero zero one six dash two two. On the main motion, vote. Then this legislation is two-thirds of the entire body, sixteen votes colleagues.
Honorable Almar B. Gay is excused. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior.
Key Allen votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior votes green. Honorable Paul B. Gay. Honorable Paul B. Gay. Honorable Paul B. Gay did not vote. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes red.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes red. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti.
Uh, Shada, Delegate Amber Canes Bacotti, I vote red. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti votes red. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
I vote green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona did not vote. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Hino votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Chair votes red.
Honorable Vince James votes red. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Junior votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Uh, green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes red. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Vote red.
Honorable Daniel So votes red. Honorable Eugene So.
Ah, no vote to Nana Shahu.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi is excused. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair.
Delegate Yellow Hair votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair votes green. Going back up. Honorable Paul B. Gay. Honorable Paul B. Gay. Honorable Paul B. Gay did not vote. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Holona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Honorable Paul B. Gay votes green via text. Speaker with a vote of fourteen in favor, five opposed, and Speaker not voting.
Thank you very much, colleagues. On, uh, can you hear me? Yeah? You hear me? All right, that colleagues, uh, the, on legislation zero zero one six dash two two, with a vote of fourteen in favor, five opposed, and Speaker not voting, motion fails. That colleagues, we are continuing on. We're done with our new business. Moving on to item number seven. Close of session announcements and adjournment, colleagues.
Motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Adjourn by Honorable Vice Chair Smith, second by Honorable Otto So.
Key Allen.
One thirty-two P M.
Point of privilege, Speaker, before we adjourn?
Yes. I'm just gonna recognize you on, on time of adjourn.
Uh, Speaker, um, can I get, uh, from, from Ms. Bobrov a breakdown of all the, um, posted citizen legislations and the citizen requests that have gone to the Office of Legislative Council? Uh, Speaker, yesterday, there was a, a, uh, debate about, you know, trying to, uh, save fundings for citizen. But we know that there's several, uh, projects that are coming down the pipeline, uh, requesting citizen funds. Uh, so I'd like to know if we could get a, a breakdown of that, um, from Office of Legislative Council. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay. A breakdown of. There's a request. To Office of Legislative Council.
Alright. Yes, Speaker, this is Ms. Bobrov. Uh, I will get that ready to go, uh, by next week.
Okay. Thank you. That colleagues.
Speaker, can I say one more thing for announcement?
Um, this, uh, you don't reserve your time.
I didn't know we were supposed to reserve time for, uh, point of privilege, Speaker.
I, I indicated that, that you were on the, you were on time. Um, and i- if someone please, uh, maybe give some time to mentor Charleston.
Delegate James.
Honorable James on adjourn.
Uh, yeah, um, thank you very much, Honorable Shana, the Speaker. Or should I say, this is, um, robot, Honorable James. Um, I'll go ahead and yield my time to, um, Shana, Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Okay, thank you. For four minutes and forty-six seconds, except mentor Charleston.
I do, Speaker, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. I, I do apologize for interrupting before we, uh, start to vote on adjournment, Speaker. I just want to, um, I, at announcement, I should have made this announcement, but I didn't. Um, I wanna just, my husband is listening in right now, Speaker. Um, and as you and some of the staff are aware, Speaker, my husband and I, we just, um, celebrated our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary on Monday. Um, twenty-five years of, of being married. Twenty-five years of compromising, twenty-five years of, um, ups and downs. And I, I, I was laughing because I was telling, um, a young couple recently that, you know, the petty arguments do start to go away. And I say petty arguments because I do remember at one time getting into a heated debate with my husband about him leaving the toilet seat up. Um, but, you know, tho- those, those types of arguments are gone now. Um, we do have occasional disagreements. Um, especially when it comes to politics, because I think a lot of people are well aware that my husband is a Republican, and I am a Democrat, and we tend to, um, you know, disagree a lot on politics and the way that, um, you know, I, I guess, uh, issues that come down the pipeline. Uh, but I do want to wish him a happy twenty-fifth anniversary. And I can say that, you know, we have been through a lot. Uh, we're not perfect. Our marriage isn't perfect. Uh, but I think twenty-five years is certainly, um, something that, um, I, I, I do wanna boast about. Um, because it, it did, you know, it, it, it is a lot. It's a lot, um, to be married. It's a lot to make a relationship work. Uh, but somehow, through those twenty-five years, we still, um, love each other. We still hold each other's hands. We still make it a point, you know, every night, um, I, I snuggle in the nook, as I call it. Um, and so I'm just really blessed to call Leroy Newton, my husband, um, for twenty-five years. We've been together for twenty-six years, um, and we do have one son, um, that we are very grateful for. So I just wanted to, to make that known, um, because he is listening in and to let him know that I love you, Leroy, with half my heart, but all of my brains, and he knows what I'm talking about. And I can't wait to celebrate the next fifty years married to you and putting up with you. And, um, all the good times that, that I know that we're gonna have. Um, and I look forward to standing beside you, um, standing in front of you, standing behind you, but just standing with you. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mentor. That colleagues, uh, let's go to adjournment. Voting.
Honorable Almar B. Gay is excused. Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior.
Agreed.
Honorable Key Allen B. Gay Junior votes green. Honorable Paul B. Gay.
Green.
Honorable Paul B. Gay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti.
Uh, Shada, Delegate Amber Canes Bacotti, I vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber. Honorable Amber Canes Bacotti votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland. Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green. Thank you, Staff.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Junior votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Proceed with.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So votes green via text. Honorable Daniel So. Honorable Dan- Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Ah, no shot vote to Nana Shahu. It's Shahu.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair did not vote.
Delegate Yellow Hair votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair votes green. Going back up. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair votes green, going back up. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior did not vote. Speaker with a vote of nineteen in favor, zero opposed, and speaker not voting.
Thank you very much, colleagues. The vote of nineteen in favor, zero opposed, and speaker not voting, we are officially adjourned on our three day session. That colleagues, thank you very much, safe travels, uh, have a good Fourth of July weekend. Um, and we will see you back in the offices on Monday, uh, Tuesday, the fifth, that's when office will be open again. Yeah.
He saved you. The way the flowers were. They're gonna sign that. They're gonna sign that, um, SYTP.
They're gonna sign the what?
Uh, as, some of you. But uh, that that station we just took across, a president gonna sign.